Approval of the payments and bills and vouchers. Jim's beside you over there.
Move approval.
Second. We got a motion on the second. By Jim, second by Kevin. They approved the bills, all in favor. Excuse me. Any further discussion? Colleen, go ahead.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
With that, move on to the minutes for the special meeting on March 31st. Minutes for that, need approval of that.
Move approval.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second motion by Jenny, second by Jim. Any further discussion? No, go ahead, Colleen.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, with that, we'll go into first item, the request to approval of the amendment to the contract of Burns and McDonald for landfill construction coordination. Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I tell me for you today, as we've talked about previously, we're going to have landfill cell construction of the landfill this year. It's going to be about $2.7 million project. As we've talked about before, we're going to have 13 additional gas wells. We're going to put a boiler in at the landfill building there. And we'll also put in some additional leachate lines as well. With the construction, we expect to have an additional eight to 10 years of capacity at the landfill. Of course, that's dependent on how much material we actually put in the landfill. And it also is dependent on how good a job we do as far as the compaction as well. With the construction, we need to have somebody keep an eye on the contractors to make sure that the work is being done according to the plans. Make sure that the testing is done properly. And make sure that the permit is taken care of with the Pollution Control Agency. As I talked about, the total cost of the contract amendment for the construction observation and administrative services is $87,000 approximately. Typically, as we've talked about, construction for the design cost are 10% of the construction cost. And the engineering design that we paid so far is $215,000, which is only 8%. So I think we did pretty well on that. And in addition, the construction observation and administration costs typically are anywhere between 5% to 10%. And the number that we're getting from Burns and Mack is about 3%. So again, I think we're doing very, very well. On conversation with Dave Overbow, I've done a lot of projects like this. It's very, very consistent with what I've worked with. I wasn't sure what was appropriate in this area because this is my first major project in this area. I did talk to Dave Overbow, and he thought this number was also very, very fair as well. In addition, I had the amendment reviewed by Tony down in the county attorney's office, and he's fine with the work as well. So with that, I'll stand to answer any questions you all may have, and I urge you to approve this. Thank you.
Any questions for Kirk?
Kirk, was the original contract for design only?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, that was only for design.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, who approved the request for $87,000. Eighty-seven and fifty-six. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Okay.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I thought I'd have an MOU. The eternal optimist, as you all know, will have it back for you next week for your consideration. So I just want to apologize for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So when does this project start, as soon as?
As soon as we can get out of the mud. I mean, that's the main thing right now. It's really, really muddy out there. And the snow's going to help, I'm sure, a lot.
All righty. Okay, Darren, with that, we're going to go consideration for paid sick leave for emergency public health workers.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners, for having me today. This was something, as you probably are aware, and most people are aware, that the government came out with a Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which went into effect on April 1st. And there's two parts of that Family First Coronavirus Response Act. The first part is an emergency paid sick leave, which has basically six conditions attached to it. And if you meet one of those six conditions, then you would be eligible for emergency paid sick leave, which I think in your documentation, you have the six conditions, so I won't repeat those. But for the first three conditions, they would receive full pay for 80 hours for a maximum of two weeks. And then for conditions four through six, they would be required to be paid 2/3 of their pay. The second portion of that Families First Coronavirus Response Act is used in conjunction with the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act, which basically states that if you are unable to work from home and you have children at home under the age of 18 that have to stay home because the schools are closed or the daycares are closed, then you can take advantage of this Emergency Family Medical Leave Act as well. And for that, that is 10 weeks of FMLA at 2/3 wage. And then the can't be greater than $200 a day past their actual wage. And they must not be able to work from home. It is a maximum of 12 weeks, but if somebody uses the emergency paid sick leave, then they would only be eligible for 10 weeks of that, so 12 weeks total. The other thing, the stipulation with that, is that if they've already used FMLA, that counts towards the 12 weeks per year that they can use. There are some qualification changes from a normal FMLA. Normal FMLA means that employee has to be here for 1,250 hours or one year to be eligible for FMLA. With this new emergency FMLA, they only have to be here for 30 days. The emergency paid sick leave, they're eligible for that on day one. So throughout this whole Family First Coronavirus Response Act, the healthcare workers and the emergency responders are exempt from this act. And so on Tuesday, April 7th, the Personnel Issues Committee met and wanted to look at, should we also qualify the healthcare workers and emergency responders if they become sick with the coronavirus and meet one of these conditions of emergency paid sick leave? The PIC was in agreement that we felt in fairness and to foster good employee relations with our healthcare workers and emergency responders who are shouldering a lot of the burden of this pandemic, that we would recommend that emergency responders and healthcare workers would also be eligible for the two weeks of emergencies paid sick leave. And that is only if they meet conditions one through four of the emergency paid sick leave and number six, condition number six. It would not apply to condition number five or the emergency FMLA. So with that being said, as far as the FMLA or the emergency paid sick leave, there's also no carryover. So I mean, they can't carry that over into next year. It is only eligible for people between April 1st and December 31st of this year, and then that goes away. And also, there's no payout of that sick leave if they happen to leave employment between now and the end of December. So with that being said, it is the recommendation of the Personnel Issues Committee that we extend that emergency paid sick leave to our healthcare providers and our emergency responders. And I think in your packet that I sent you, it has kind of a definition of who that applies to on the last page of the packet that I gave. Mostly, it's going to be our correctional officers, our law enforcement, and our public health nurses that have to go out and meet this on the lines of this pandemic. So after, anything else? I'm open for questions.
One question I have, you know, and I realize that they have to put a limit to it. I mean, to take care of children under the age of 18. I just don't understand where we put that age up so high, you know. I just, I realize you don't have the, you don't have the option of changing that. I mean, but that's a pretty open policy there.
That is, we were kind of surprised at that as well. But I guess what they're trying to do is mimic the normal FMLA. A lot of the regulations use age 18 as, once they reach age 18, they're considered an adult and not necessarily under the parent's preview. But yeah, we thought that was a little high as well, but that is specifically written into the law of age 18.
Okay. Any questions?
We had a lot of discussion on this at PIC last week. We spent quite a bit of time on it, and I think everybody agreed at the PIC meeting that it's an issue of treating all our employees equally and fairly. And so that was why we are recommending this.
Mr. Chair.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I just want to clarify that this is not contingent on a positive diagnosis of COVID-19. I think that a lot of times, there are recommendations, if you're meeting all of the symptoms, that they'll just have you quarantined during that time as well. But I just want to clarify that.
That's correct. This could be either you're showing symptoms or you actually have tested positive. And most of that is going to be conditions one through three on your handout. Or if you're at high risk and you can get a doctor's note that would say that they recommend you stay away from the workplace for one reason or another. We do have two forms that each individual that wants to apply for this would have to fill out. The first form is electronic or in paper. It's this one here where they would list which condition they're applying for or if they're applying for the expanded family medical leave, emergency family medical leave. And then, once we receive this form, we send out another form to get more information so that we can make a determination on whether they're going to qualify for this emergency paid sick leave or the EMLA. So there is some kind of a qualification criteria that they're going to have to provide us with some information, like what doctor recommended your quarantine, what healthcare facility recommended it, what are the ages of the children, can they work from home? If they can work from home and do everything that they're supposed to, then they wouldn't necessarily qualify for this emergency paid sick leave or the EMLA. It's only those who can't work from home that would be eligible for this for the most part. Now, if they're sick, you know, and they're exhibiting symptoms of COVID, we wouldn't want them here anyway. And we would be paying them sick leave because they would be using their sick leave. But what this is doing is this is giving them those 80 hours of paid sick leave rather than making them use their accrued sick leave as well.
Mr. Mojo got disconnected here, so I'll get her back on the line. Okay, just take a minute while we get her back online.
Your call cannot be completed. Your call cannot be.
It's always good to get help, vote there.
Hello.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know where we cut off there, Jenny. Did you get the end of his?
I'm watching online, so yes, I heard it.
Okay, very good. You have anything further on that?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So the, so from April 7th to December 31st, we have a, what is considered an emergency family FMLA, right?
Correct.
That's over and above what our standard policy would be.
The emergency FMLA adds the criteria that if you have children at home because of the daycares or the schools are closed and you can't work from home. Now, that's not a normal FMLA.
So I guess what, yeah, what I'm getting at is there's been some additions to that that is strictly due to the COVID-19.
Correct. Those conditions have been added, and then the restrictions on when you can use FMLA have been lifted, meaning you would have to be here a year to use FMLA normally. But now, you only have to be here for 30 days in order to use it. So those are the two things that have been changed.
So because this is directly related to COVID, are through HR and working with our auditor's office, are we going to have that coded differently?
Yep, it's already coded.
It's coded differently so that would potentially qualify for some?
Yep. What we've done is we've created a whole nother timesheet for those people. And then they would sign off on that timesheet. It actually even says COVID 2/3 or COVID full pay, depending on which condition they have. We've changed things on the backside to add that to their paid time off as well for that COVID-19, so that they can apply for that. And then, we haven't activated that for everybody. What we're only doing is activating that for the people who have applied and been deemed accepted to participate in this program. So only those people would get that timesheet. Now, there is one thing that I probably should make public is the COVID-19 2/3 and COVID full-time. We're doing a lot of things that the systems weren't designed to do. So that will show up on their regular timesheet, and we want to make sure that nobody uses those two lines. We will give them another e-timesheet to fill in this if they apply for either of these conditions. So it'll be kind of micromanaged by HR for the people who have been accepted to take advantage of these two issues. And then I think we should be able to track it through our systems by doing that. Right now, we don't have a lot of people that have applied for it. We've had, I think, four so far. And two of them, after they looked at it, withdrew their applications. And the other two are, one is a high risk, two of them are high risk, and there's actually one that we're still waiting on whether they're going to qualify or not.
Mr. Chair, if there's no other, I would move that we include law enforcement and public health workers to participate in the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Program.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant to approve this. Any further discussion?
I do have one follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. So it just goes to the December 31st ending date here. I can't imagine COVID going away on December 31st. So is this something that we would just have to look at at that time?
Yeah, I think that we would definitely look at it. I think, you know, from kind of what I've heard, that there could be another spike later in the year. I don't know, I'll leave that up to the healthcare.
Well, I guess my, the point being is, you know, obviously, you know, there's a lot of discussion about opening things back up. But at some point in time, when we know somebody is still, you know, contagious of it, I don't care whether it's December or whether it's next April, they shouldn't be at work.
Right, correct. This emergency paid sick leave only goes through December 31st. At that time, I would suggest us relooking at it.
I just wanted to clarify that.
That's possible, yeah. And I think that's probably why they extended it to December 31st, because who knows what's going to happen in the October, November timeframe? Yeah, exactly.
Well, I would imagine there's going to be some guidelines that are going to come out as to how we go about things in the future with, that's for another day, I guess.
Right.
Okay, we've got a motion, the second. Colleen.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. With that, we'll move on to an update.
Thank you.
You've got all your people here, Kathy. You and Broda take care of this. An update on our command team.
Good morning, thank you.
Good morning, Kathy.
The rest of the command team is back doing, we have some calls that are required for planning. So they are on the planning calls right now. So just a quick update right now in Clay County. We have 43 positive cases. It's not showing on the website yet because there is sometimes a delay. I usually get the notification before they're officially all put on. So we have 43 in Clay County. And the Minnesota numbers are around 1,650. That also changes on a regular basis. Cass County has, in North Dakota, Cass County has 116 positive cases. So Clay County has 43, Cass County has 116 at this time. Most of our cases in Clay County, the highest percentage are people that are in their 50s and 60s. That's where we're seeing the largest number of cases, but we're seeing them in all age ranges. We actually even have a two-year-old, and then we have a 19-year-old. So we're seeing cases in every age range, but right now, the majority are 50s and 60s. The 70s and older, we have about six cases, so that's not even the largest group.
So we're not having that high percentage in nursing homes and stuff?
Well, you know, we're seeing some of that increase. So that typically has been the case around the state, that nursing homes, once there's a positive case, it's really challenging to keep that under mitigation. So we are seeing cases in nursing home facilities that are ramping up. So the information I receive from the state, I do receive age ranges. I'll receive the gender. I receive information about which city it is in Clay County and whether it was what they call community spread, which is the majority of what we're seeing now. Initially, when we first were receiving information, it was about travel, so international and domestic travel. And now, most of it is community spread, is the majority of what we're seeing. And then I'll receive information whether they were connected to a previous case. But I do not receive names of individuals, and I do not receive addresses. So it's still pretty confidential. The information, the only time I'll receive a name and an address is when the individual requires some essential services. So if public health needs to assist them with, they need food access because they can't be out, or they need some medication, et cetera. So we work with them on whether they can, you know, get food delivered, if they have friends that can deliver it, or medication. So we work with the individuals. I believe we've only had maybe six that required us to communicate with them about essential services. Now, the food pantry has given us, that we will be receiving actually, is a few boxes of food. So if there's ever a need after hours when the food pantry isn't open, or if we need something on the weekend and it's urgent, we have the ability to get some food out to people. So we'll have those stored in public health. And of course, you know, the sheriff's department is delivering, you know, food items as well to people. So we have the ability to meet some of the needs. We haven't had any issues so far with the six that we're dealing with that provide any essential services. We're able to work out plans with them about how they can get all of their essential needs.
Who maintains this list that you say we have no knowledge of?
I, well, I received the list from Minnesota Department of Health. They send the list. In Minnesota, in the state of Minnesota, all the lists go to the public health director. And so I maintain the list in my agency, and then it's kind of a need-to-know basis. I do know that the governor issued an executive order where he'd really like first responders or those who may encounter individuals for safety reasons, he would like more information for those individuals, specifically a need-to-know for first responders and others. And Gabe isn't here, but we, they don't know how that's going to roll out yet, whether it'll come through public health, or maybe they'll get it directly. So there is going to come a time shortly where first responders will be able to get addresses. They will not have names of individuals. In the event that they will be encountering an individual for an infraction of some sort, that they'll know that this person is actually positive. So they'll get addresses but not names.
Mr. Chair.
Kathy.
Just a minute, Jenny. I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, so the, the ability to do contact tracing, from what you're telling me, we don't, we're not doing any of that?
Contract tracing is happening with Minnesota Department of Health. So they assign a case manager to every case, and that case manager is reaching out within 24 hours of their notification that the case is positive, and they are doing all the contract tracing.
So it's being done?
It is being done.
It's just not being done by Clay County Public Health?
Correct, it's not being done by local public health. If Minnesota, and they have a number of individuals, I want to say 70 is what the last number I heard across the state, that are able to do the contact tracing. And if they become overwhelmed and they just run out of people or they just cannot keep up, that's when they'll notify us to do that.
And are you equipped to do that?
We are. We will get the screening tool that Minnesota Department of Health is using, and we will be equipped to follow up with all those cases. We are equipped with the information and knowledge. I'm not saying we're equipped with the manpower, so we'll see how that goes. We're hoping Minnesota Department of Health will be able to keep up, but it certainly is a large task to kind of.
Well, you know, I ask that not only for now but for the future because it sounds like contact tracing is going to be an important piece of the future when we go back to some form of reality here.
Right, that's right. So, yeah, that's still, Minnesota Department of Health has assured us there will be plenty of time that they'll notify us, that it will become a local public health task. So at this point, they're very confident they're able to keep up for quite some time. So we'll be doing some planning in regards to that with my team.
Very good, thank you.
Jenny, go ahead.
Thank you. Kathy, I understand and appreciate HIPAA laws. With that said, I've had several residents reaching out to me in concern that we have the information on where the locations of the positives are, but we're not sharing that. And what I mean by that is either saying... this percentage of the cases in Clay County are in Morehead, this percentage of the cases are in rural Clay County. I understand that we may be cautious to do that, but I've had about three individuals in the last week really saying, you know, the more information we can have, the better, because we're hearing that it's either all in Morehead and not in rural, so maybe don't need to maintain the social distancing aspect. Obviously, that's not the right route, but is there any way we can share any more information?
You know, and I say that I get the information of the cities, but Minnesota Department of Health has clearly said we should not be giving out cities. We should only be saying Clay County at this time. So I can push that message up, Commissioner Mojo, and see if they are willing to allow that to happen at this time, but currently, the information is just that we should not be giving out individual cities to the public.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I just think that if there's any way we could be discreet in just identifying maybe either northern half of Clay County, or the southern half, or rural versus the cities, that may be helpful.
Sure, and we can see they've really put some hard lines on that, but I can certainly, as this evolves, you know, social distancing is, you know, our mitigation tool that's the most effective, and they really like us to just, everyone, no matter what, consider that the people around you could be carrying the virus, because you can carry it for a couple of days before you become symptomatic. So in other words, you can spread it to another individual. So that's the biggest thing, is you just anticipate that everybody in the community could be a carrier, and so social distancing is just the most important strategy. And then, of course, you know, you see a lot of people out there now wearing their cloth masks. Now, as I talked about the last board meeting, the cloth mask is not of medical grade, so it will not protect you from another, another individual, but it protects the other individual. So if you're coughing and sneezing, at least you can contain it within that cloth mask. So that's just another strategy to, and there's people out there that are wearing a variety of different cloth masks. The medical grade, and the reason why they're not pushing that so much is because there's still a shortage. There's a shortage of surgical masks, and there's a shortage of N95 masks. So they really want those for those that are caring for individuals that are positive, so that would be all of those people in healthcare, as well as even people in the congregate care livings that are caring for people that are positive COVID. So those are just on reserve. If we tell people to get surgical masks, we're already in perfect with getting the resources for that, so. But I certainly will take that information that you were talking about, and I will have some more communication with our MDH partners.
Thank you.
Sure. So we talked about the executive order, the Governor's executive order. I believe I talked about that at the last board meeting, but just to reiterate that stay-at-home order, he extended that to May 4th. So that is the Governor's order that we just, because of the, this novel infectious disease is, and again, it spreads so easily that we need to maintain that social distancing. That's the biggest, that's the biggest tool we have right now without medication to avoid the spread. You need another person to spread it to. So if you can socially keep your distance, six feet and beyond, that eliminates the spread to another person. So he has executed that order to May 4th. I know he's had some discussions about a slow opening of certain facilities and businesses, but we haven't heard any detail about what that may be at this time.
I have a couple of questions, but I can wait till you.
Okay, so we are providing a lot of information out to the public. We are providing it via, it's on our webpage, it's also on our public health Facebook, so there is a great source of information that is going out. We also have information going out to our employees. Specifically, if there's, like cleaning information is one of them, cleaning the office spaces. What do we do if we have a positive COVID employee? Or if there's somebody that's been in contact with someone that who potentially has COVID? So we're getting a great number of questions from employees and the general public, so we have someone working on responding to all of those very quickly. We also are working with our long-term care facilities. We've spent a great deal of time getting information to them and helping them work through, we have one facility in our community that really needed some pretty specific information, and we need to work through some processes with them about having COVID-positive residents or staff, so we've done a great, a great lot of work with those facilities to help them operate safely and to work through some staffing issues that they have, because of course, you know, you have the fear of people, and we know it's out there that the minute they hear COVID, they're concerned, and so sometimes staff do not want to work. So we're working through that issue directly. Let's see, what other things? And I talked about the liaisons, no I did not. We have liaisons with the long-term care facilities. So we will be reaching out those that may have a case and those that do not. So in our community, any congregate care living, I have now specific people signed up to communicate with them on a regular basis, to help them through the process. So many of them are, have a lot of questions and concern. So we can help them with that process. So we have what we call the congregate living liaisons, and those are nurses that will work through processes with them. They'll be in direct communication, it may be daily, but we'll be working through that process with them as well. Any questions?
So I have a couple of things here. First off, going back to the 43 cases, do we know how many of those are hospitalized?
I believe five of those are hospitalized.
Okay. Which brings me to my next couple of questions. Do, we always hear about, you know, the, all these different areas, and when we expect to see a peak? Or do we have a peak for Fargo-Morehead area? What they're suggesting is a peak period of time?
Yeah, at this point, we, what we're saying is we haven't reached our peak. Once we reach our peak and see a decline, but we haven't, we haven't we have not reached that peak yet in the Fargo-Morehead area. And talking with our healthcare providers, and we have regular calls with Sanford and Ascenda, so they're keeping up, they're keeping public health up to date on what is happening in their facilities. And as you know, it was, there was actually put out there in an article that Fargo Dome is going to be a facility that they can use for surge. So just as of yesterday, they really have low numbers of those that are dealing with COVID cases. So that's good news. They're not really seeing a high surge yet, where they need to even use another facility. They're able to manage with the equipment and the beds, the ICU beds and other beds. So their numbers are quite low, so that's a very positive thing. And it would be nice if they would maintain that, but, you know, we all anticipate that they may see more down the road, and there may be a higher surge, but right now, they're managing quite well as of yesterday.
So speaking of that surge, and I saw that report about the Fargo Dome, let's hope that doesn't get to that, but if it does, most of our citizens in Clay County get their medical services across the river in Fargo. And I'm assuming then that if there got to be a point where there was significant, where they had to use alternative sites, our citizens would still qualify for, we don't have to be looking for sites in Clay County, do we?
That is correct. Our citizens, everyone they serve-
I don't want to surprise later, so.
Very good question. Everybody they serve will be served by their health facilities that they utilize now, so yes, they'll be able to utilize all of the services. So the part of that is open to everyone that's being served in our region, actually, so.
All right, let's just be hopeful it doesn't come close to that, but.
Yes.
That was my question also, whether we can utilize that facility, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Good question, okay. Any further questions over here? Go ahead. Oh, you got more?
Yeah, well, just to say that, you know, we'll, I believe the press conferences will continue tomorrow. Again, we had the metro-wide weekly press conferences. We didn't have one last Wednesday, but I believe, actually, there, some of my staff are on the call about that right now, so we'll see where that's going to go. I'm assuming we'll have it. I don't know if it's going to be virtual or in person, so we'll have more information. I can pass that on.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for my report. Other than that, next agenda.
Okay, the next agenda is the contract with public health, excuse me. Yeah, we have a contract coming up. Do you want to talk about?
Yes.
For housing individuals?
Yeah, so we have been working for the last three to four weeks on an alternative shelter site for homeless individuals who are staying at either Micah's Mission or Dorothy Date, both part of Church United. They don't have the capacity with that organization or either of those locations to isolate or quarantine residents. And to help them prevent the spread from within those organizations, we've found this alternative shelter, which has become somewhat commonplace throughout the country where public health is making agreements with with local hotels. And so we have made that arrangement. We've got a verbal agreement. We've got a system, a plan set up with our social services with public health, with Churches United, with Sanford Nursing, and now we need to execute that to finalize it. So when we do have somebody that needs that alternative housing, that we have an agreement in place to allow us to move forward. So you have before you an agreement with the actual hotel, and then you have one with the security company, because we would be having a portion, we would be securing a portion of the hotel for these folks. That would require us to have security, and so you have before you those agreements.
All right, we discussed this at our pick meeting the other day about getting a shelter with homeless people, so any questions for Ryan?
We didn't. This is another issue we had a lot of discussion on, and these guys have done an excellent job in dealing with this. It's a difficult issue, and it has, you know, hopefully, we won't have to use it too much, but one of our concerns, of course, is would it be qualified for reimbursement, you know, if and when we do have to use it, and at least the best information we had is that it will qualify if we do have to utilize these, and the expenses should be reimbursed.
Okay. The portion that's for the security, who sets the guidelines for what they do in security? Is that something that we we do through the hiring of them?
Yep, we have expectations for what it is we specifically need.
Okay.
And so we've worked with Gabe Tweaton and to make sure that we had the law enforcement voice there, and so, but we set specific expectations for our circumstances.
Oversight of that, if it were to be needed, would that, would that be done by Gabe and the Sheriff's Department then, or who would, or would that be public health?
Well, right now, I'm coordinating the effort. I would communicate with Gabe and ask for guidance from him on that.
Okay, all right, just-
Okay, we had a contract before us that we have to approve or not, and hopefully, we, if you approve, we don't have to use it.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we got a motion, a second discussion. Steve, you got some discussion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I would just make note that there's two separate contracts, so we will take a motion for one's for the lodging, one's for security.
Okay, we've got a motion on the lodging, I take it, at this time?
First motions for the lodging.
Motion by Grant, second by Jim. Any further discussion?
I just, can I make one comment that both of these contracts have also been vetted through our county attorney's office?
Okay, thank you. Colleen?
Commissioner Dany.
Hi.
Commissioner Gross.
Hi.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wayland.
Hi.
Okay, now we're going to bring up the contract for the lo, excuse me, for the security.
I'd move approval of this security contract.
Got a motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Grant. Any discussion? Colleen?
Commissioner Gross.
Hi.
Commissioner Wayland.
Hi.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Dany.
Aye. I think we got Jenny in there to do something. Okay, both motions, contracts approved. Hopefully, we don't use them. Thank you for your work, Ryan. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, I guess we got a bid opening for the boiler replacement. Joe? We're going to replace the boilers in the courthouse, courthouse here, so you got bids today for that?
I do. Morning.
Good morning, Joe.
So, just to be clear, what we're doing today is we're opening bids for the, just the mechanical portion of this project, so for ballpark numbers, you can take, you know, when we look at these numbers, we open these bids. I've gotten quotes for the boilers directly, and the electrical, and the controls also separately, and some miscellaneous costs. And that number is $154,000. So you can take that number and add it to this RFP that we're about to open up. That'll give you a total ballpark, pretty good ballpark number of the total project cost of this, so. So what we've done is so we're requiring four different requirements. Oh, sorry, you got it? Oh, use that, yeah, that's fine, I'll use that one. So we're requiring four different requirements that come with the bid, a licensed copy, contractor copy, a bid form, insurance, and a 10% bid bond, so. Right now, we have four bidders, and I can start when you're ready.
Go ahead.
The first one is from Robert Gibbonsun. They have a, it looks like they have a bid bond and a contractor's license with it. I'll just verify it quick. So they got bid bond and a license copy, and contractor's license, so, so far. So it looks like they have all the required documents here. They have a bid form with it, and the total project cost is make sure I got it right, $220,800. That's Robert Gibb. Okay, the second one is Dakota Plains Mechanical.
I know Robert Gibson Fargo is Dakota Plains also.
Yep, yep. Looks like they have a bid bond. Their insurance. Okay, and that's, they have all the, they have everything they need for requirements there. Okay, so they have a total project cost of 173,985. Okay, that's Dakota Plains Mechanical.
Looks like you need an assistant.
Yeah. Realizing that right now. So, we'll get her. I got only two left. Next, next bid is from Peterson Mechanical. They got their insurance. Looks like it's their contractor license. Yeah, it's bid bond. And total project cost of $293,200. That is Peterson Mechanical. Okay, final bid for Burn Boiler Mechanical.
Who's the company, excuse me?
This is Burnin Boiler.
Burner.
Burn, Burnin Boiler Mechanical.
Is Burnin one word?
B-U-R-N-N. Okay, I'm going to open up the bid bond first here. Are they local? What's that? Are they local? Uh, yes. Yep, all four are local. Looks like they have their bid bond. Contractor license and insurance. So they have everything they need there. And they have a. Their bid is 251,900. So. What I plan on doing, and that's the final one, that's Burn Mechanical. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll take these bids back, review them with our, with the engineer that we've hired. And I'll come back next week with a, with that number, recommendation, and a total project cost of everything to request.
Do we have an estimate of what it was planning on costing about?
Yeah, our first initial cost, when, when I got a company a year ago, was 375,000.
That's what the.
That was a company to come in and do everything. And we are managing it in-house, so there should be some savings there. But I think.
Well, I would think with such a big variation, when we're talking about a $120,000 variation on a bid.
Yep.
Of around 200,000, that we better take it.
Yep.
Look at that. Everything is covered on those bids that we want covered. And.
Yep.
You can come back with a recommendation, then, as far as.
Yep. Definitely big differences here. So I'll, I'll go through it, then we'll have, we'll have a recommendation next week for you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to have a motion as far as a potential? Or do we wait for them to come? We'll wait, okay. Thank you, Joe.
You bet.
Highway Department, we've got some bid openings there. Dave and Justin.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
I've got two items on our agenda. First item would be approving or recommending approval for the bids from last week. That was the mill and overlay on County Road 33. We took those numbers back. We tabulated them, did not find any errors. Bids were, in our opinion, very, very good. Contractor is well-known and has history with Clay County, as well as doing good work. I did check with MinDOT just to see, you know, what they're doing. And everything we're hearing, and MinDOT is forging ahead. Construction is essential, and there doesn't appear to be any, any issues there. I checked with our county engineering parts. And what we're actually doing as a group is we're putting together a letter that we're sending out to contractors that may or may not be fueled from the AGC, but they're already putting together potential claim letters. And we have a response letter sending back saying that, one, we don't see any issue for claims at this time. Make a long story short, I guess, we feel construction's going to move forward as normal. So I would recommend approval of our overlay bids here from RJ Zabrow and Sons from East Ground Forks. Our estimate was just under 1.6 million, and their bid was 1,164,635.67.
Okay, we opened the bids last week, and this is the final. Any questions concerning that?
I'll make motion to approve the bid for RJ Zabrow.
Second.
Here we got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the contract for the overlay for County 30, State Highway 33. Any further discussion? Colleen?
Commissioner Moja.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Dany.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. So that will move on to the next one. The three bridge replacement projects.
Right, this is for replacement of a package that we have, two county structures to replace with one township. Justin and I went up to Morkin Township last night and had a visit with their town board, showed them where the numbers were. We did this back in the very late fall of 2018 as well, when we were getting into design. So, so the county facilitates the township bridge program for them. We inspect their bridges annually, and then when they get to a point for replacement, we design them and enter into construction and facilitate the town bridge funds for the replacement. And then there's a small local share, usually about $20,000 or less for the townships for their bridge replacement. So it's a really good program. We've been doing it for years, and it works out really well. We've got quite a bit of interest on our culverts for this project. We do, in a couple of weeks, we'll have six more coming back for bid opening as well. So we got quite a few bridges to replace this year. Funds are finally trickling down, so that's kind of why we see an influx of projects. We did have electronic bidding this, for this project, like we did last week. We do have one paper copy as well. So I think I will go through the electronic bids. Everything looks to be in order. We, we cannot get into these things till nine o'clock. That's when we get the special key and open them up and everything. So I'll go ahead and read the electronic bids, and then we will tear open the one paper copy after that.
Go ahead.
First bidder is Central Specialties Alexandria. And it does say here that it's an approved bid. Everything is complete online, and they do have their 5% bid bond attached as well. And their bid is 852,678.0.
Do we have an engineer's estimate?
Yeah. So our engineer's estimate on this project is 586,387.0.
Okay, thank you.
Next bidder is Dennis Drew's Incorporated from Frazee. They do have an approved completed bid here, as well as bid bond attached. Their bid is 770,391.0. And our next bidder is Celine Brothers from Holly, Minnesota. They do have approved bid, and they did mail in their bid bonds. We have a copy of it right here at the table. Their bid is 768,628.0. Next bidder is Midwest Contracting. I think they're from Marshall, Minnesota. They do have an approved bid, as well as a bid bond of 5% attached. And their bid is 724,847.0. Next bidder is Riley Brothers Construction from Morris. They've got approved bid and bid bond in the amount of 5% here. They, their bid is 663,330.0. Next bidder is Hool Excavating. And do you know where? We, we do have their bid bond in hand. Do you know where they're from?
I don't.
And we haven't worked with Hool before. But they do have a complete bid and a bid bond attached. And their bid is 649,492.0. And the last electronic bid that we have is from Landwear Construction. I think they're out of St. Cloud. They've done a lot of pipe with Clay County in the past. They do have a complete bid. They do have a bid bond amount of 5% attached. And their bid is 599,302.30. And then our last bid is a paper copy that was mailed to the courthouse. The bidder is Gladen Construction. They're from La Porte, Minnesota, just south of Bomiji. Done a lot of work with Gladen Construction before. They do have a bid bond here, in the amount of 5%. Okay. The combined total bid from Gladen Construction, 608,335.50. Looks like it was pretty close for the top three bidders. I guess I would like to entertain a motion of approval contingent on no errors at this time. And it looks like our, our numbers, we are low bidder, which we hate to see that. We want to take a good look at it. It was pretty close. I think we figured about 2% underneath the low bid. So, but there again, like I said, we, we normally don't like to be a low bidder with our estimate. But numbers were within 2% of our estimate. So most of these dollars are coming from bridge bond funds and the town bridge fund. So there's a, on all three projects, there's very small portions that are local shares. But we will take that back. And it shouldn't have major impacts, minor impacts to our budget from what we had estimated. But all in all, I think bids look pretty good.
Okay, we got a bid. Any questions concerning?
I'd move approval of the low bid contingent on review. Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Jim. Any further discussion? Colleen?
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Dany.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moja.
Aye.
Okay, so you get back to us on that?
Right, if there's any errors, I'll bring back. If not, I'll consider the motion approved.
Very good.
Thank you. Just maybe give a real quick update on like where we're at with flooding and roads. I talked to our maintenance staff today. I think we still have four roads that are closed. We got the bridge on North Broadway. I took a look at that this morning. And we have pulled a lot of trees out of there, as we do, because as river comes up, the trees push against the pier, and which is causes a lot of havoc underneath there. It's already, we're already under that project of looking at stabilities. We've got a road on County 100 that's still closed. County Road 68, north of US 10, kind of by Glendon, that's closed. And then we got a couple of sizable culvert washouts. We got one up by Yulin, and another one just kind of north of Holly. I've got some pictures that I'll show at our Highway Committee meeting today. But so all in all, not too bad. Or if it wouldn't be for the snow, our staff was going to start hauling gravel and, and doing some of the repair where the water washed the gravel off the roads. But all in all, it wasn't real bad. I think we still got four spots, and we'll replace those, those two culverts and get those patched up in the next month or so, and get back to business as normal.
You said you replaced those culverts. Is that part of our culvert replacement? Or is this two new ones?
It would just be our maintenance dollars coming out of those. So the, the one pipe up by Yulin washed up, actually, they're both probably going to be replacements. We'll have to see. But it'll be maintenance dollars that'll repair those. It won't be part of this. They're, they're not that big. They're, they're less than, I think one maybe is a 36-inch, and the other one could be a 24-inch. So they're not real big pipes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Any else?
No, I think that's it.
Thank you, Dave and Justin. Now with that, we'll go into committee reports. Jim, you want to start us out today?
Sure. On Thursday, April 9th, I attended through a teleconference, the Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District meeting, monthly meeting. And we heard all the reports from the different supervisors. And, and the meeting went well. Getting used to this teleconferencing system. And then on Monday, yesterday, I attended a teleconference for COVID-19 issues relating to the homeless and the vulnerable population of the Fargo-Morhead area. This was hosted by the Fargo City Commission. Mayor Mahoney was there, as was Commissioner Grinberg, and different stakeholders, such as the FM Area Foundation, Executive Director Tim Beaton, Dakota Medical Foundation, United Way, Lutheran Social Services. And there was discussion of issues and preparation for COVID-19 issues for the homeless and vulnerable. And there was a discussion of grants from the state of Minnesota, specific, I'm sorry, from the city of St. Paul. And there was discussion that they may want to emulate something like that in the Fargo-Morhead area as well. So that was my report.
Grant?
Let's say I had a pick last week. We already discussed those issues. And then I had a area agency on aging meeting yesterday, and pretty much just discussed the, the status of each county in dealing with their elderly populations. And of course, Clay County is, in our region, has the most cases of anybody else here. But we also have the highest population. So that was it for me.
Okay. Jenny?
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the SWCD meeting that Commissioner Dany reported on. And I had the Cat Clay Food Partners meeting, where we're continuing to answer questions from the public on food availability during the pandemic issue. And I worked with Dave on a ditch that was plugged, coordinating with the watershed to make sure that all that opened up. That concludes my committee reports. I do want to say, I know that we've implemented a new policy for citizens to be heard. And I think that's a great way for citizens to continue to kind of bring up any topics that they wish. I would suggest that we possibly put that on our board agendas going forward, either having, you know, underneath the citizens to hear and saying that, that, you know, while the courthouse is still closed, this is how you can go, go forward with doing that. So that concludes my reports.
Yeah, Kevin?
I had one meeting last week. On Thursday, we had the Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting. And amongst the things, of course, a lot of it was dealing with procedures during the COVID response. And then also, our, the administrator for Lakes Country Service Cooperative requested the authorization to look at potential reductions in programs as a result of the COVID-19 issue. There's an awful lot of things that they do with school districts and those type of things. And with schools being on lockdown, there's some concern with budgetary issues. So we authorized him to review that at his request. And so we'll see what happens. Clay County, we did authorize. Clay County, we did authorize some approved wellness grants. Clay County will be, if you haven't got it already, Darren, we're going to be receiving $2,660 in wellness grants. 400 of that is based on the size of our group. So we got, we had a $400 base, and there was basically a $5 payment per participant contract, and we had 452 contracts. So I know in the past, there've been some things that have been done with that money. Darren, maybe we can discuss what your thoughts are on using that. I think there was some things that qualified before, whether it was Fitbit stuff or things like that. But obviously, this is, I don't know, this is how this ranks in terms of dollar amounts, but that's what they approved for this year. I think that concludes my report. Oh, I just wanted, the regional juvenile meeting has been postponed from this Thursday. And then Commissioner Wayland, we do have a special meeting of the Diversion Authority on Friday at noon, or Friday at 1:00? Okay, that's, okay, that concludes my report.
Okay, we had a couple of meetings. PIC meeting, which both items that we discussed there, we've already covered on the agenda today. Thursday, I attended a two-hour webinar with AMC concerning the government portion of it. Made quite a few different items that we discussed. The election process is one of them. Voting by mail, possibly is going to be a big thing coming up, because in Wisconsin, I think it was, where they had a voting, and out of the 100 polling places, in one area, only five of them were able to staff it. So I mean, there was 95 that were closed down because election workers didn't show up. So they're trying to prevent something like that. So they're looking at mail-in ballots, because they're expecting at least 3 million voters in Minnesota this fall. So, because Minnesota has been a very good percentage as far as voting. So they're anticipating that, and so they're looking at mail-in ballots. We discussed unemployment benefits for self-employed people. Right now, it's not, I don't know if it's approved yet or not, but they ask people to start applying for benefits in case it does get approved. So I don't know if that's been approved yet this week or not. Property tax, and Dr. Storres was also discussing property tax relief. There again, we discussed that somewhat, that the state is the one that sets the dates for property tax payments. And the only thing that can be deferred is the penalties and late payments. So at this point, we haven't had the need to go further on that. So and there was, the next thing they discussed was workers' compensation. That took care of my meetings. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Majority of last week, and last week was spent on COVID-related matters, talking with department heads. Kathy, Gabe, also other area leaders, Robert Wilson, Chris Volkers. On Tuesday this past week, again, we met with PIC, which has been addressed. We had, on Thursday, we had a management meeting, talking about the extension of the stay-at-home order. Clarification for our staff of the North Dakota Governor's Executive Order, that our North Dakota residents do not have to quarantine, or, excuse me, North Dakota employees don't have to quarantine in place for 14 days by going across. That executive order was amended. We talked about the Family First Corona Response Act that was addressed this morning, and Kathy provided a board of an update. Gabe also wanted to let everyone know that FEMA has opened a portal now. We are able to submit our expenses for reimbursements based on the COVID pandemic. A couple, just a few other things. The Juvenile Center did receive its certificate of occupancy and DOC licensing, bed license yesterday. Last evening, their full facility was open. And so that project originally, I think, was set up for 14 to 16 months, finished in just under two years. But there are some things they'll be wrapping up here over the final months, but all the bids are now available over at the Juvenile Center. I would like to provide some special recognition. Cheryl Grandbois, last day at Motor Vehicle is, will be Thursday. Cheryl's worked in motor vehicle for 42 years. Normally, we would have the opportunity to publicly honor her in an open house, and I just want to make sure that we did not miss that opportunity to thank her for her contributions to the county, to this board, and the citizens of Clay County, and wish her well in her retirement. So I did have one last thing. As Commissioner Mojo mentioned, last week, we did open up the ability for people to either be call in or provided, to read a comment during this time. It didn't come in prior to board, but came in during the meeting. And I've been asked by Sarah Watson Curry to read the following message. "I am listening to our county health speak on the importance of social distancing. I'm horrified to see all but one commissioner in chambers. You have the ability to meet virtually and gather in a manner..." Excuse me. "You have the ability to meet virtually and gather in this manner model poor choices to Clay County residents and puts central staff who are present at the meeting in harm's way. You are late in adapting. Please consider adjusting practices immediately." So that concludes my report.
Okay. Anything further? Your turn.